Hang on one second. Hang on. Hang on one second.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna, yeah.
Good morning. Let's call the Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting to order February the 2nd at about three minutes after nine. This time I'd like to have Mr. Craig Slay if you would. Can you do our invocation for us, please, sir?
As you will. Father, indeed, we are grateful for your presence here with us today. I thank you, Father, for the occasion that we come together to celebrate how you blessed us, how abundantly you blessed us. Father, thank you for good leaders and good teachers and good school systems in our county. Father, we take so much for granted and yet we pause now to remind ourselves, Father, to thank you for what you do for us in this county, how you bless us with our kids and with our school systems, our teachers and other leaders. Father, thank you for the privilege that we have to serve our community. Thank you, Lord, that you give us a place where we can come and conduct the business of the county. And we can do that in safety, Father, we can do that in freedom. I thank you for the men and women who have given everything, have given their lives, Father, sacrificed everything. Their families have sacrificed so much so that we can enjoy the freedom to come today and to participate in government. In Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Okay, at this time, we have before, Mr. Aubrey, before you come forward, we've got the election of officers, we've got a change of the guard today, so I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to nominate Jared Morrison as our president with Jay Bishop as our vice president.
Okay, we've got a motion.
And I second that motion.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to have Jared Morrison as president, Jay Bishop as vice president. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. This time, I'd like to recognize our new president, Mr. Morrison.
Thank you.
Okay, we've got a full house for this. All right, thank you very much. We're gonna wait just a few minutes. We're gonna go ahead and move, Mr. Aubrey, I believe you have comments. Hayes, you come forth and...
My name's Aubrey Hayes. I live at pole two Mill Run Road, Brandon, Mississippi. This morning, I want to talk about drainage. Drainage in my subdivision is a chronic problem. It was, the subdivisions was developed about forty years ago. It was built, it had, it was platted and then when it got platted, on the plat is drawn drainage easements. These easements run between houses. In some of the easements, there's ditches or, or concrete line plumes, I would call them, to, to move stormwater from the internal streets, like Greenwood, Greenfield, down to get water, stormwater off the streets and into, into the creek or the ditch. The one particular one I want to talk about is at four thirteen Mill Run Road. The lady that lives there has a chronic problem that because the, the easement in her yard was, contains a culvert that was placed there. I don't know who designed the drainage system, but it's like a house of cards. One piece of it fails, all of it fails. This piece of culvert that goes across her yard has four, as best I know, it has four drain boxes from Greenfield draining stormwater across her yard. She's received a letter from the attorney, board attorney, saying that they can't go on her property to repair this broken culvert. And that the only solution for her is to replace the culvert herself or have a homeowner's association replace that culvert. She does not feel that she would benefit anything other than being flooded by repairing it would stop the flooding, but it's really repairing it for the benefit of the county who is draining streets across her property. So she asks y'all to reconsider and repair that culvert. You did it on the north side between Mill Run Road and the ditch, and she's requesting y'all repair the culvert today. Her other solution is to just cap it where that culvert comes into her property. She can cap it off and let the water run naturally wherever it's gonna run. Now, which way would you like her to do this, is the question? And I think the county owes it to her to repair that culvert because they are draining stormwater and it's an integral part of the street. And even though somebody says the law prohibits y'all from entering property, except when it affects streets, I can't see where four drain boxes stopped up. It's not gonna affect the street. So I ask y'all to reconsider that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Now, we have, I think, a very special point of recognition of the Florence High School, their winners of ROTC Drill Team State Championship. I want to say before we really start this, you know, you all as young people, I've always said, you know, you sometimes get recognition for doing, I say recognition, bad recognition for doing bad things and being problems and troubled children and everything. So I think it's so important when you, you achieve the level that you have achieved as young people in whether it be ROTC, sports, or anything, that you should be recognized there to see that, you know, a lot of young people think we only get recognized if we do bad things. And I think it speaks volumes to have this number here. And it, and also, it says so much for the leadership that you have had, as well as your parents and as far as your, the leaders that have carried you down this road to get you here. And that's the reason I think it's so special to have you recognized at a place like this and a point when you've done and accomplished all you have as just being positive and being, that you are the future leaders. And I hope you, you think about just what you have accomplished, but always remember, you couldn't have done this without great leadership of, of your instructors as well as your parents. So I just want to, I'm proud of you. At this time, I'd like Mr. Slay to come forth and do his presentation.
Mr. President, it's always exciting to be able to declare a resolution on behalf of the board commending students like these students who have accomplished something spectacular. And it is indeed a privilege for our county and for this board especially to be able to recognize you folks today and your leaders. And so it's my privilege to read a resolution. You can see that we've got a bunch of kids here today, and we don't have a whole lot of room up here, so we're gonna do the best that we can to stack them in here like tore wood. So y'all be patient with us as we, as we go through the process. Kids, I'm gonna eventually get to a section here where I'm calling your name now. You'll hear your name called and it may not be pronounced correctly, so forgive me for that in advance, but I'm gonna call your name. And when you hear your name called, I want you to come forward. And I would suspect, Mr. President, these guys know how to get in a line. So I'm gonna ask you to line yourself up as best you can up here, but we're gonna wanna take some pictures after we get through this process, okay? So this is a resolution commending and congratulating Florence High School Junior ROTC Drill Team upon winning the 2014-2015 Army ROTC Drill, Drill Team State Championship. Whereas on December the 13th, 2014, the Florence High School Army JROTC Drill Team won the 2014-2015 Army JROTC Drill Team State Championship by defeating twenty-four competitor drill teams at a statewide competition held at Jackson State University. And whereas the Florence High School Army JROTC Drill Team won both the armed division and the unarmed division competitions while receiving a total of thirteen awards during the date. This is the first statewide team championship for the Florence High School Army JROTC Drill Team. And whereas the Florence High School JROTC Drill Team spent many hours of practice without regard to the elements, honing their combined skills into a disciplined, precision drill unit. Through regular practice and hard work, the team performed exceptionally under difficult circumstances and earned the title of state champion. Whereas, a special commendation is offered to team coach Master Sergeant Todd Norris. Todd, if you'll come forward, please. Why don't you bring that trophy with you while you're coming, 'cause I know you want to put your hands on it. He guided this team into this special accomplishment. Congratulations are also in order for the Florence High School Principal, Mr. Tony Martin. I believe he's with us. Come forward, Mr. Principal. Also, Assistant Principals Laura Clark and Keith Reed and Senior Army Instructor Sergeant Major Kevin Donahoe. Let me interject here, Kevin couldn't be here today. Kevin is actually related to me by marriage, my uncle and our missionaries in Bosnia, and he is the brother to my uncle, Troy Donahoe.
Small world.
So it is a very small world, and I told him that when we got ready to do this, what a privilege it is for me to recognize this group. Sergeant Major, Sergeant Major Kevin Donahoe for surrounding the Florence High School JROTC program with exceptional leadership. And whereas, the members of the Florence High School JROTC Drill Team are Hunter Aguilera, Tristan Clark, Reed Fauque, Michelle Humphrey, Christina Joyner, Eric Kine, Emily King, Lexi Lawrence, Brandon Lou, Anna Martin, Tyler McLaughlin, Dean Mallett, Matthew Nicholson, Brianna Osborne, Garrett Phillips, Logan Robuck, Samantha Sanford, Morgan Sanford, Allison Sims, Andrew Skinner, Sidney Smith, Ashley Vaughn, J.J. Williams, Kendall Wilson, Lydia Wilson, Tyler Wimmerly. I left some names off. I wasn't... Oh, okay, I got you. Thank you very much. I want you to listen closely to this next sentence. Whereas, the most impressive, impressive accomplishment of the Florence High School JROTC Drill Team is that the members of the team posted a combined overall grade point average of 3.71 out of a possible 4.0.
Ooh.
How about that? Whereas, it is with great pride on behalf of all the citizens of Rankin County that we recognize the special accomplishments of this impressive group of students who have brought honor to their school, their families, and to Rankin County. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors for Rankin County, Mississippi, does hereby commend and congratulate the Florence High School JROTC Drill Team for winning the 2014-15 Army JROTC Drill Team State Championship. And we extend to the team, instructors, and administrators our best wishes for their future success. Join me in congratulating them. We have hoped to allow for a, a demonstration of their abilities, but there is not room in this place for that to happen, and so we're gonna have them back at some point to show us how to do this drill team thing and put a, put a display on for us. We'll do that at some point.
There's one thing I would like to say. You know, this means so much to me, to any young people, because, you know, you get recognition a lot of times for doing the bad things, and I don't think that sometimes we, we get enough recognition to show how proud we are for you doing the positive and being positive people in community, in the community. And, you know, I, I just commend y'all and remember, you can do, get recognition being positive and doing a good, good thing for the community. But we're proud and the community's proud. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Congratulations to...
I don't think they showed you this five... I don't think these were marchers in the drill competition.
Congratulations, guys. Thank you, sir. Congratulations. We gotta give that reality.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Sir, glad to have you guys with us.
Let's go back to school.
Proud of y'all. Very proud of them.
Keep up your good work.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, they get recognition. Negative recognition. Oh, yeah.
Jared, I'd say that cleared the room.
Say so. Who's waiting on Ryan? Sheriff, Sheriff stepped up, didn't he? Yeah. There's Brian. Brian's still out there. Brian, he's coming. Thank y'all. Thank y'all for being here. I guess when we get Ms. Sheriff Bailey back, we'll...
Yeah, he'll come up. He's coming up.
We'll move forward. Kind of cleared the room, didn't it? You know, I think it's so important that young people get recognition for doing such positive things. They get enough recognition for negative. So you got a group this large, I think that speaks volumes. And I, I mean, really, to me, it speaks so much for the parents because without supportive parents and supportive leadership, you couldn't, we wouldn't have that.
Jared, you want to come back to him and go to old business?
Where'd he go? Janice is on his way.
He'll be here in just a minute.
Huh?
He'll be here in just a second.
Okay. Do we need to move on, just come back to him?
No.
Well, we, well, we go on with old business and consent. Why don't we just go ahead?
Okay.
Approve the old minute, old business?
Make a motion, we approve the January fifteenth, 2015 minutes.
Second. Motion from Mr. Wilcox. I got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Send agenda. We looked over it.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion approved by Mr. Johnson. Second, Mr. Wilcox. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Well, John Sullivan here, look like you've got a shortened briefing, so let's go ahead with Ms. John Sullivan, tax assessment.
I made a petition to change the assessment to 2015, real first and property assessment.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second. Motion, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Rodney. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
And...
What else?
I don't need the authority to pay registration fees for one of my operators.
Motion approved. Second. Motion approved, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Mr. Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
Bridget, can you be as quick as I can?
Bridget, you got a little short list here?
Sit right there. Sit right here and turn on my phone.
I'm fine. My hand.
If we have to stop you midstream, you just come back to me.
I'm awarding, asking approval to award bids for the unit system that we opened at the last board meeting. The first is to award one or more wheel loaders to JWH Equipment, the amount of $134,250 with pocket machinery as an alternate. The second is one or more motor graders. Recommendation is awarding that to scribbling equipment, $214,900 with pocket machinery as an alternate. And the next is one or more tandem dump trucks. The recommendation is tri-state truck and, I lost my line, $123,248.
Make a motion, we approve this?
Motion, Mr. Wilcox.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Keith. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Next item, I'm requesting authority to advertise mosquito control products.
Motion. On motion. Motion, Mr. Keith.
Sir.
Second, Mr. Johnson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Sheriff, while you were away, we moved right along. We're coming back to you.
I thank you. I appreciate you taking the time.
You need, you need this podium back. Okay.
I appreciate you taking the time to talk to us.
I'd rain you, y'all. I need more.
You know, it, it, over time, everything changes and evolves and grows and, and the reason up here, David, is Rankin County's changing. We have 142,000 people here, and the type of calls that we, that we have are changing. You know, I think I told you this before, you know, the national average for death of shares is ten, probably 10,000 people. And Rankin County, we're doing with half a difference, probably 10,000 people. And the biggest reason that, I like to say it's 'cause you have a greater share for the great shares office, but a lot of it has to do with the great people we have in Rankin County. We don't have a bunch of thugs and lawbreakers in Rankin County. But something we do have is a huge problem, and you don't see it much in the media because they don't advertise, but it's suicides, it's suicide suspects. Over the past, I'm sorry, past two years, steadily increased, steadily increased. Last year, the month of January, we had an armed standoff with a suicidal suspect every single week. We were there for three weeks in a row. The most recent one, man was, Barry had himself inside a house. He had a rifle, was shooting at, I think that's his discharge rifle inside. So at that scene, we had how many victims there?
Twenty.
Probably twenty, twenty-five victims tied up for six hours. And, you know, I was on the SRT team before and everything, and then I bought, I wanted to try and put this human factor in, and I bought Barry and Chris over here because they were on the SRT team. And what you're looking at right now, those are two faces, those are two of the guys who are gonna be stepping through that door with that guy and with that rifle. You know, on a suicidal suspect, we try to wave him out, talk him out, everything. If they have a hostage, then we have to go in. We can't wait to go in. I was trying to put the human, human face with it, and you don't have... The, the recent ones, I mean, how close have we been the past few times? I mean, she was a lot. Just about every time. And, and, you know, there's definitely, the threats there, I mean, I mean, just explain to me on the last one, you know, what, what happened.
I would say at my time, with 25 years of doing this job and being involved in SWAT for the past 20 years, I went to more suicide by cop calls than the past year that we've ever had in my whole career. And, you know, I had a good friend that was killed that way at JPD. His name was Brian Kinsey. He was shot in the doorway. These goalways are just like hallways, just like stairways. We call them fatal funnels. And that's, you know, it's just getting worse. We've got these armed guys that want us to kill them, and that they will call it in on 911 if that's right there. I mean, that's the cause that we've had. And the last incident in Robin Hood, me and Barry reached the doorway, we got up there too, used the robot and everything, and when we looked, the guy done passed out. So we took the opportunity, took him into custody, but he had discharged that weapon inside that house before we got to that door. So this is a tool, just like a tool in a toolbox. We need this, just like any man, a carpenter or whatever, we need this as, as for our protection.
You know, and back when we just recently got Barry, the candy person Barry, the candy I'm gonna be using for situations like this, but the dog can't, Barry didn't open the door. Dog can't reach, Barry put it in. I let Barry just wing it, train him, have you, and make him be able to work that. Yeah. But, um, so what I'm trying to do is put the human factor in, what's a human life, what, you know, what's a human life worth and what's a deputy worth? And, you know, most of the things I asked for, you know, I tried to buy the used cars, we got that old rag, the armored truck for the officer's safety, but some things, you know, cost money, but we, we have a robot that we borrowed from the FBI, you know, when it's available. And it's a throw bot. And it's just got two little wheels on it, looks like a toy almost and everything. You just go up to a window, you break and rake the window, and you throw the robot outside and back off, and then it rolls around, but can't climb stairs, it gets tangled up in line, and it, yeah, can't talk, you can't communicate with it.
It'll work.
Yeah, can't unlock a door. So I'm gonna let Raymond introduce, so you want to do a quick demonstration to know what people were asking for. Or Raymond, if you want to take it over.
There, yes.
I just wanted to introduce Dennis Smea. Dennis came to us, actually on a cold call. We'd looked at their product once before, but we had, just for budget reasons, had passed on it before. But he called to us with robotics and was showing us his products that they're, that they have. Dennis has a long history in the military, now working consultant with robotics, and I'm just letting him show you what, what we're looking at, and he'll turn it back over to the sheriff.
I appreciate it. I'm not gonna use that.
I figured so.
I'm not gonna use that. I can speak pretty loud. My background is military. Guys, I appreciate y'all having me. Sheriff, thanks for having me back. Chief, I thank you so much for having me back. Guys, I want to take up just a couple seconds of your time. Let me, let me just kind of give you a quick background and scenario and, and stuff on the, on the robot and a little bit about myself. The robot is, we're from Robotech's. The robot's out of California. It's, it's out of Sunnyvale, California. Of course, you can tell probably from my accent that I am not from Sunnyville, California, nor do I want to be. I am, I live over in Alabama, and, and I just work the whole, the whole country as a representative for Robotech's. Twenty-seven years in the military, most of my background's special operations. I spent about seventeen years in the 75th Ranger Regiment. I retired a couple of years ago and I ran the Ranger School. So I'd like to echo your remarks about the kids that was in here. It's pretty impressive to see them guys, less than 1% of the nation serves. So when you got them kids like that that comes in and volunteers to do something like that and we continue to progress them, y'all like them guys on because the country needs them. So there's my political announcement.
Yeah, I agree.
For, for the military, anyway. So, so Robotech's, we make, we do one thing, we make a robot. This is the robot we make. We don't do anything else. We don't make vacuum cleaners. We don't do anything like that. We make a robot. We make one robot, and we do it very, very well. The robot makes a difference. So we got three, three different plug and plays that you got. This is the tactical package that you can see right here. We, we call that the surveillance of the SWAT package. Just to put it in perspective, after two years of extensive research, the FBI HRT Hostage Rescue Team just bought 22 of this package right here and, and along with a couple of the arms as well. Last week, just got another order from HRT.
from HRT for twenty-four more. Uh, so the FBI, this is the robot that they're, that they're going to.
I'm gonna interject right there, let me tell you something, the reason we try to follow along with the FBI does, they spend millions of dollars researching things, so they've done the research, we've done call, you know, they say, hey, this is gonna be the best one, so that's, we try to follow them on ammunition and different other things, because they do all the studies on them.
I spent about two years with them up at, at Quantico, working with them, and every time they brought in another robot, they'd bring us back to do a side-by-side comparison. Uh, for, for the money and, and what you get for the, for the, uh, size of the robot, uh, is the, is, this is the best way to go. So this is the, this is the first robot that we have right here, again, it's plug and play, same robot, same chassis, uh, here in the tactical package. We also have a hazmat package for, that can put the multi-ray probe on it for, uh, gas and rad, uh, rad reads as well, a lot of your hazmat teams and fire departments and stuff use that one. Uh, again, same robot, just a different plug on top. And this one on this side is the EOD robot, it's got the arm, uh, where we was talking about opening doors and stuff, the little cannon you see on the top up there, that is a breaching tool, and I'll show you a video here in just a second.
We can't see it.
And no, and no matter how, and no matter how you, uh, no matter how you, you, uh, I can run it over there if you'd like.
Yeah, let's see it.
That's right.
I can't.
So.
I'm saying, this isn't, I'm gonna try and share, so this is the anti-personnel, this is a breaching tool, this is called a breaching tool.
I'll show you a video over there on the breaching tool in just a second. So, so just so you can see, the, the, the controllers control the robot, you, I can fire, I can fire this breaching mechanism remotely, from a remote location, so my point on the three different types of robots and the different situations that we have, uh, you can inspect a suspicious package, you can suspect, you can move up to a dangerous situation and send it in before you send somebody into harm's way. You can kind of get a little bit of situational awareness of what's going on in there before you actually send an operator to the door. Um, the robo, the robot is, uh.
I'm gonna interject one more thing.
Yep, sure.
When we're talking about this cannon, you know, Chris, when we're talking about breaching the door, if you see where the door handle is?
Yeah.
The lock's right there, or if you have a deadbolt lock, we're talking about breaching, they said we go up to a house, Chris, what kind of round, tell me about a breaching round, what is it made of?
It's a impact, no, a breaching round that we use for shotgun.
Yeah. It's powder metal.
Yeah.
It's powder metal, it's water or something like that, it's not gonna shoot, kill anybody inside that, it's just gonna destroy that lock where we can open the door. So that's what we're talking about, we're talking about breaching, and that's what that tool is for. Right, right now, we have to do the breach, we have a team of five, go up to that door, and I had to hit it with a sledgehammer or we use a breaching shotgun, so you have five lives sitting up there, and, you know, especially if you go to a mobile home or a house, you know, or two, two people, they're gonna do anything, you know, any kind of building material, so we got five lives on the line right there, just gonna breach the door to throw a robot in.
That's okay, no, no problem.
So, the round that comes with this one is, we call it a hat and round, or Avon round, it's called Avon because it's ceramic, and it produces no shrapnel on the inside, so if someone is in the inside of that door, the only thing that they may get is a little blowback from the door handle, or the door frame, it, it blows in there, it's not gonna, yeah, it's not a projectile that goes through the door, so that's, that's the kind of round that's on this. This is completely recoilless, um, so, and I'm not gonna get into it a whole bunch, I'll show you a video, but this, we call it a parachute, the, the industry calls it an air brake, um, because what happens is when you fire it remotely, that key goes in the bottom of it, this is your initiator, it goes to the back of here, it shoots the breach out and pops the parachute out, and then the barrel just goes right there. All that does, though, is keeps my arm from getting blowed off. Imagine if you mounted shotgun to it, the recoil you get on a shotgun, I mean, this is a twelve gauge-ish, um, round, and this is the, uh, backside of that, does that make sense? And I'll show you all the video of that soon. Um, so, so the, the point on it is, is the, um, introducing this before you introducing a, a, an actual individual into harm's way. Um, some, some of the, uh, the things that we've done, I was personally involved in this one, uh, it was a training event in Dorton, Alabama, the, the kids is a, a great dovetail off of, it was a, uh, active shooter in the school scenario, you know, we hear about that almost weekly in, in all the world news, um, and, and around the country of the active shooters in the high, in the, in the schools, not necessarily high schools, in the schools. And, uh, we, we were actually able to do two scenarios, this was at Dorton, Alabama, and we, we introduced the Dorton Police Department, and they done a call-out, which was, um, completely cold, and they called everybody in, and they had a school, and they had kids, and they had everything, it was a, a scenario. It took them almost nineteen hours to, before, from call to exfil off the objective with all the casualties and everything that they had. Break. Everybody done a quick after actions review, uh, two days later, not knowing it was happening or anything, introduced them to the robot in them two days and just left, they didn't know what was happening. Hit them again with a scenario, almost the exact same scenario, introduced the robot to the, to the thing, two and a half hours, from infield, from the time they get the call to exfil, and one of the great things about it was, they could kid laying on the ground, you know, injured, run the robot up to him, two-way audio, they can see that's what they've got, they've got feedback, it goes back to the big, uh, command tent, or command vehicle, they could talk to the kid, they actually found where the suspect was, they were actually able to interdig with two packages that they found was, was, uh, could be bombs grabbed with the arm, pulled it outside, rendered it safe, got all the kids out, everybody exfil in, in just a little over two hours. So, that's, that's just the difference in the dynamics of six hours on a, a target to, to, um, just a, you know, a couple of hours on a target and get time all your deputies up. So I, I'll show you real quick, it climbs stairs, it's extremely easy to operate, I'm gonna let the newly elected president do it real quick. So, it, it completely climbs stairs, it's, this, this portion weighs about thirty-five pounds, it's so easy to operate, you don't have to have a dedicated operator for it. Forward is forward, back is back, right is right, and left is left, it's that simple to operate.
Very simple.
Drive, drive it right there, and I'm gonna show you something else where you can kind of operate it. So if you got stairwell or you got something like that, it can climb stairs, if you do, throw it in a window, so you gotta brake and rake the window, you don't?
I'll pick it out. She knows me.
Try to avoid a lawsuit.
Yeah, they don't get way to start off.
Dennis hadn't mentioned yet, we haven't mentioned this one, he's equipped with a PTZ.
Yep, sure will. So, so what you're looking at there right now is you're looking at the drive camera. So the camera that's on there is the drive camera, and that's the camera that's right in the front, it probably hits feet and stuff right there, right? So, if you hit this button here, there's your pan tilt zoom camera, so now this, this joystick right there, just moving around, and that moves that camera that's on the top.
Oh, yeah.
So for an example, if you got your team stationed outside the door, they're coming down, they come to a hallway or a T-intersection or open door, they come down this hallway and this door's open, they can bring that robot right there, continue to cover long down the hallway and look inside this room before they even send an operator down the hallway to, to look in here.
We got you on camera, Chuck.
Yes, yes, sir. So if you see our bad guy down, we can see, hopefully, talk to him first of all, but also see if he's still armed possibly, so we know it's safe to deploy our men inside the residence.
And a lot of these, all these suicide situations, they'll be, uh, using alcohol and drugs, so we're sitting there talking, no spot for hours and hours, we can send this in, hey, he's in, it looks like he's in there passed out, we, we can slowly, you know, send some officers in there, but I'm just tired of putting these deputies' lives on the line when there's a, a piece of equipment out here that can, that can protect them.
Well, how durable, I mean, like this arm here, uh, you know, overall, how durable?
Very, very, very durable, they, we, we say that it's throwable, but I, and this is what I tell, tell everybody, you know, you treat it as an operator. So, I mean, we say that it's like a twelve-foot fall, so take this, take that right there, flip and run it back, run that one all the way down.
Has the ability to self-right it, so if it's turned over, it's deployed, or if a bad guy kicks it over.
Stop, and go the other way.
If they shoot it, uh, you can't come there, that's three.
Oh, it's gonna flip it. Cool.
Extremely durable, so you throw it through a window, and it does land on its head, that's what's gonna happen, every time, it's gonna land on head, you're gonna throw them, something, you know, and, but it can self-right, falls downstairs, falls on its head, you can self-right it.
Because you can, you're watching it right here, so you know what's going on.
So you know, if you have everything turned upside down, you know, you know that it ain't worth it. Durability, we say that it'd take a, a two-story fall, um, so, but I tell these guys, you know, I can jump out a two-story window ten times, that eleventh time, I'm gonna break my ankle. So I mean, that's the, that's the deal.
Right.
The good thing about it is three-year standard warranty, only one in the business that does three-year standard warranty, and pardon the pun, but it's bumper to bumper, I mean.
What, what can go, what can go wrong with it, I mean, what is, what is its weakness? Or, or what would you expect?
If you covered, if a suspect covered over, put a blanket over the top of it.
Yeah, it could run right out, right out of the blanket.
Okay.
I mean, it'd run, so you throw a blanket over, that's one of the biggest things, because most of the suspects, subjects thinks that this is the main camera.
Right.
So they'll even cover just that camera.
Yeah.
And not knowing that you got a camera here. Also, you've got, you can turn it up here, and you've got audio, can you hear me talking right now? It's got some feed right there, so I've got two ways, so I can talk to them, like, oh, cut it out, come and get you.
Right.
You know, so it's a little close right there for the reverberation, but.
And, and we're not saying this is the end-all, they could pick that thing up and put it in a bathtub, would be messed up, you know?
Yeah, they might be, but.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, yeah, but, yeah, we're not saying it's the, you know, it's not gonna get out of anything, but it's a lot better than, just saying it's a lot better, and let me tell you this, I don't know if y'all remember, we had a stand-up at Palace Age, I had a couple of stand-ups, where everything's on the second floor, none of the robots we had can climb stairs, these can climb stairs, we ran it all over that jail, up and down the stairs and everywhere, so.
It, it is waterproof, uh, let me back up, extremely water-resistant, it is not, it is not waterproof, because it is electronic, but two feet, we'll say, just gotta run through a ditch, uh, or, or we're in the neighborhood where the young man's got the drainage problem, we can, we can run through there, as long as we keep that antenna, uh, out of, completely submerged, it'll be okay. Rain, whatever, is, is totally, totally good in the rain, I mean, it's, I've had it complete downpours and ran it for hours with no problems, just as long as it's not soaking in water like sitting in a ditch.
Right.
It'll be okay, yes, sir.
The really only difference, I mean, that, obviously the difference, but I mean, many differences, this one, that one, this one has the.
Yes, sir, this one, this is the same robot.
Will it boom up?
It will, I mean, this is as high as it goes right here.
Okay.
Uh, so, and that, this is the extended reach arm, which is the one that we, that we recommend, because it reaches most standard door locks.
Uh-huh.
Um, we've got one also that's, that's about four inches shorter, um, and it, and most of the guys who's doing that, like border patrols and stuff, who's carrying it through the desert and using it for pipe bombs and drug interdiction type stuff, but for this one, for a breaching tool and stuff like that, it works a lot better because it can get right between, most doors, it's got the lock and the deadbolt, and this would fit right between the lock and the deadbolt to defeat both the lock mechanisms at, at one time.
How, now how does it do that?
How does it defeat the lock? With that?
Okay, with that, okay.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, piece is on the front.
This.
Yeah.
So, so that's a claw? Yes, sir, let me grab this other one real quick. Yes, sir, that's a claw? So with that claw, and you can see here, so the cameras, that's the camera off the claw there, and then, and you can work it.
Okay.
And again, this apartment fire can just pops off, I mean, this is just an accessory, and, as well as this initiator, um, here on the side, so.
If we're talking about an initiator, we could take a can of gas, go into a house where a guy is setting the gas down, like in a one contained room.
Right.
And remotely set off the gas canister.
So this says there, I put that key in there, you want to arm it? It says yes, are you sure you want to arm it? You had yes, and right at that time, you'll hear a little kick. That was it, it fired right then, so that was, and I can be behind cover, I can set it off wherever I need to. And, and that's what's initiating these charges and stuff on the far side.
What, uh, what range does this have?
Very good question, question is what range does it have? It's, it's digital wifi, and it's line of sight, so what that, what that means is it's kind of like your, uh, like your cellphone. Uh, so we say about three hundred yards or three hundred meters is about what we can do in a normal situation. We ran it through the jail the other day, and in certain spots, we would have to just move left or right just a little bit, because it is directional line of sight. Um, but, but for the most part, we was able to clear two or three hallways ahead in order to get in where we need to from the outside. I have had it as much as six hundred, uh, six hundred meters before where I couldn't even see it no more, um, and then we've also got this directional antenna, highly recommended directional antenna, uh, because it just, if you point it in the direction you want it to go, and instead of this being an omnidirectional antenna where it just goes out this way, that's, that is magnifying it in one direction, and it's picking up off this antenna here, and, and, uh, and it goes a lot further. We went six thousand, two hundred and twenty-three feet with, with the directional antenna, and that's over a mile, five thousand, two hundred and eighty feet's a mile.
And I want to, I want to interject right here, you say, when we use a front mile, EOD say, we have eighteen windows, has a detail turned over interstate, we can see one of those, right in there to look at and assess the.
Right, assess the situation.
Well, how, how durable in that if someone was to just shoot it or something, you know?
Very good question also. So, I always get asked that question, and being, how durable is it to be shot?
Well, I knew if I saw it coming, and I knew it had all its capabilities, I'd want to disarm it.
But you, 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 you know what, surprisingly, most people don't, so they scared of it. I mean, almost to the person, people have surrendered to it, like, whoa, I don't even know what that thing is, and, and seriously, and, and then also, if you can talk to it, because they're, they're like, oh, man, they got me, because it's talking back and forth. Quick funny story is, was, had that model right there, barricaded suspect with a hostage, which was his daughter, upstairs, uh, run the robot upstairs, one of the few people who picked it up, most people don't even touch it, they're scared to even touch it, he threw it out the window, the operator grabbed, or, or righted itself, run it back upstairs in the house again, and said, now cut that shit out, and the dude, the dude walked downstairs, you know, so, so pardon my language, but, uh, it wouldn't have been near as funny if I had. But, uh, yeah, so he did, he surrendered, hands up, walked downstairs behind the robot, which was, uh, pretty good. Now, I, I tell him it's like an operator, if you shoot it, and you don't hit it in the vital organ, it can lift its way home, it's a six-wheel drive. Um, if, if you do hit it in the vital organ, then it, then it's gonna die. One of the first ones we had shot was in Dallas, Fort Worth, um, they threw it in the window, saved, saved a, a whole bunch of guys' lives that day. They run it in, and had, the guy had a table, uh, dining room table flipped up, and had six long guns lined up, AK-47s, shotguns, um, and some pistols lined up all along the way, right by the door, he was wanting them to come in, basically suicide by cops was what he was wanting. Whenever they run the robot inside, they seen that, and they, and seen all the way down the hallway, turned the corner by the, by the, if that was turned up on the side, so there's another room over there, he came out the side, he seen the robot, and it scared both of them, so he shot the robot one shot with an AK-47, blanked out, camera went blank, everything turned black on it, and they thought that it killed it. Everybody was upset because the snipers had been out there for six hours, and everybody had been waiting on this guy, you know, waiting and waiting, 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 they thought he killed himself when they were seeing the robot inside. Just a couple of seconds later, the camera came back on, and the operator got so excited that he moved the robot, and then the guy actually killed it, he shot it like fifteen more times.[1606.32] Good news was, good news was, they, uh, they knew that the guy didn't kill himself, and the real good news was, was they was able to, uh, to, he's no longer with us anymore.
What do you do if this doesn't breach the door the first time?
Bring it up and reload.
You, you either, you either send your team to follow it, you know, you'll have a, you'll have a failure, failure breach SOP, uh, or you back it up and reload it. Uh, I'm not saying that it won't fail, but knock on wood, Murphy's always there, so it, someday it's gonna happen, but we haven't had one yet, but, but it will happen.
Let me tell you the difference in this.
Time doesn't, time is, 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 is important when you have one individual in there threatening to kill himself, threaten to kill others. When he has a hostage in there, then you have to move, and you have to go faster. If, if it didn't work then, the element of surprise gone, you have the team has to go on up there and breach it, get him in the house, get the hostage. If it didn't, we just back it up, wait, reload it, and go back up there and shoot it again, you know, because we, when we take time on those, when there's no other lives being ruined.
Couple of things we've been having, uh, across the country, especially out west, uh, is the gas canisters. So, you know, every now and then, we have to introduce gas into the, into the scenario, and if you just bust the window and throw in there, it just, it's gas in the house, and you really don't know where the guy's at, he can run hide, had guys laying in tubs with towels over their face to keep them from. This, this, we've got the, uh, in Defense Industries and Safari Land, we've got Whitney Remote Initiator, as the sheriff was saying, we can carry that tri-chamber gas canister right to the room where he's at, tell him what we're fixing to do, and then do it. Uh, and then you have, and we're focusing it in one spot, so instead of us throwing, we can be in here and throwing it in the front door, it ain't gonna affect us in here for some time. We're gonna have to throw a lot of, but we can drive the robot right in here and, and, um, and, and set it off.
You can remotely make it open a door or whatever, I mean, the, for the fingers and all.
Yes, sir, that's right, so, so with it, uh, you can open the gripper, you turn the gripper.
Right.
Left and right, and it will, and it will open, open, uh, doors, it just takes a little bit of practice and stuff. Uh, with the, uh, arm, it's a little bit, uh, more technical, just, I mean, same, very easy to use, same controls and everything operates the, the robot, but it just takes a little bit of practice on, on opening it, but you can, and it's also got preset positions, so if you, if you wanted to do, I mean, that, that position right there is the, is the, um, um, door position, so it, it'll preset, so I don't have to pull it. It, it goes straight in, sets itself up, and it's gonna, that's about right where a doorknob's gonna be, I just gotta tinker with it just a little bit. Show you this video here real quick if y'all, if you're gonna, if, if anybody got any questions, y'all can continue to ask while we're.
We can equip it on the laser.
So here, here's the video right there, then opening a door, a door. So this is a normal doorknob, and in this video here, you can see it's gonna, it's, it's gonna actually open the deadbolt as well. Now, the difference in this is, is this robot's inside the house going out, you're most of the time gonna be outside coming in. But the reason we done this is to show you the dexterity of the, of the robot and able, actually able to turn the, um, deadbolt as well as turn the handle to open the door, so most of the time, you just go up there and unlock the door, walk out, you're not trying to breach out. Now your door's open. This is the, this is the one with the breach, uh, with the, with that cannon. That's called a carbon fire can, you'll be able to see it again, so you see your locking mechanism here, there's your lock and your deadbolt, and this is actually a lock and a deadbolt. And you'll be able to see it, see it come out right there. And there's, and the only thing that you see there, and that's a, that's a two-by-six, an actual solid piece of wood, two, two-by-six there.
And we're doing the same thing now on doors, but we're using a halogen tool or sledgehammer or the shotgun, right, so it's the same amount of, of damage.
What is it, uh, how is it warranted against what?
It, it's warranted, you mean if I shoot it or I run over it?
I mean, yeah, I mean, like, how is it warranted, yeah?
Anything that goes wrong with the robot, we fix in the three years. Um, I, I was telling the sheriff, I have, I've been with the company almost three years, and the whole time that I've been there, anything that has ever broke on it, I've never known them not to fix it, uh, to include being shot, to include being run over. Now, I can't tell you that they're gonna replace your robot if they run over or shoot it, however, I can tell you we have in the past. So, this, this is another tool here that they have, that you can release air in the tires, so you, it just pokes in, pokes in the tire there, um, in, in case you needed to, to do that, that. This is the one I wanted to show you, so here's the tri-chamber, um, and then this is the tri-chamber gas, this is that initiator, it's there on the side, and this is called thermal tube there for that tri-chamber gas, uh, canister. So they're gonna run it inside the room here, and they're, they're actually standing outside remotely, watching on the video camera that you have, and then they're able to fire the, uh, fire the canister.
How many units have y'all sold this?
Company's been in business about six years, um, twenty-five people in the company. Whenever there's an order placed, they, in the back, they're putting it together in production, so it's not, it's not a, uh, a mass produce thing, we don't make them until they're, until they're ordered. Uh, we've sold, um, fifteen hundred-ish, I wanna say. And that was, and I, I don't, that's not an accurate, one-hundred percent accurate count, but it's around, it's around about that. Uh, Metro D C, the Metro SWAT team, uh, just placed an order as well, so all of them, um, and there's the gas chamber within the, within the, uh.
And see, the way we're having to do that right now is go up there and break and rake a window, or br- open a door, do the canister and throw it in.
And hoping it's in the right room that he's in. And this is just the same picture, doing it in a bathroom, so you see the canister, replacing it down.
What about ongoing research and upgrades and?
So, the, the ongoing research, I mean, we're always, the, this is the Avatar Three, the difference between the Avatar Three and the Avatar Two is just some software upgrades. What we done, and, and every one of the things that we've added to it came from the field. So any, the guys who have our robots said it would be nice if it would go to the doorknob position as a preset. It would be nice if you could have it do this. Out of about sixty, um, recommendations that came in, we implemented thirty-two of them, uh, in the, in the change. Um, right now, there is no looking upgrades or anything for the robot, again, we're not looking to change anything, this is, this is what we, this is what we do. What was the other question you asked? Is that it, just the software? This is the, this is the last thing here that, that, uh, we're working on, and we've got a couple of things that we're doing, uh, really excited about this one. This is a, this is a rigid linear, so this is a very drastic situation where you've gotta get inside that building or inside that door. That was a steel door, clash three steel door, and, uh, and it, it, it took care of it, knock, knock.
Hello, going in.
You're gonna get in that house, and the good thing is, is now that robot, you can see, it, again, that was a, that was a hundred grain dead cord, and it didn't even, it didn't even move that robot arm. Sheriff, anything else?
Guys, any other questions?
Is it, are you? Okay.
And the thing about this, what did he say about our calls, is when they call in, and they say they, you know, gonna kill us after they got somebody there, the first thing they say, if you come in the house, we gonna shoot you, yeah, we gonna kill you.
Right.
And that's the big thing, that to there where we can get to the door and blow it off, it would enable a whole lot of, you know, safety, be able to see more, because when you're behind closed doors, it's hard to see what's going on, but if we ever get the front door off, you know, it's not quite as bad, back when me and the sheriff was on S R T. That first initial break, that's where most of your gunfights are gonna be anyway, because you got somebody sitting there waiting on you. If you blow the door off, it gets that shock, and you could have a team coming in the back or whatever, but it's just a decor, a, you know, to say, you know, if it gets shot, hey, it gets shot, but, you know, it's a, it's a decision that usually me and the sheriff's sitting there trying to make, are we gonna send somebody in and take a chance on getting them killed, or are we gonna send this in? And it's a tough decision, and why is it on your bag, you know, it's like, you know, we got, you know, send baby, part of the team going up the door, and I'm sitting there just, you know, back there bottom truck watching, you know, just, waiting for a gunshot to go off, and you know, luckily, you know, which we've already had, you know, last year, we had deputy that had to shoot a guy, you know, and, and kids, and I hate that, the deputy hates that and everything, but I'm saying, is it, the crime isn't bad, is this, and you can, we, we probably get some statistics from Regent about the, the suicidal, we have probably one successful suicide every two weeks, you know, say? And then an attempted suicide three times a week.
One last thing I'll say on it, sir, is, is what we didn't show is the diversionary device is, is, uh, uh, the chief deputy was saying is, it, I mean, uh, sheriff was saying is, um, it's got a diversionary device where, like, the, the bangers or whatever they use, the, you can do the same thing. So if you did put it in, blow that banger wherever you needed to blow it at, as a diversionary device for, uh, for these guys to make entry in the backside or whatever they needed to do. You can use it as a, as a diversionary or a ruse or whatever you wanted to, to do with it.
So what you're looking at is either one of these two, I mean, this one comes with its features, this is not something you can add to that.
Yes, sir.
Oh, it is?
One, one, that's what I'm saying, so this is just plug and place, you take this off, that camera fit?
Okay, so you have accessory, okay.
So it's, it's one chassis robot with the hazmat package, the E O D package, or the tactical surveillance.
Are those the only, uh, packages available?
Yes, sir.
I mean, which covers, pretty much covers it.
Anything that you need, yes, sir, it does, now, there's a few other accessories you can get, like the trailer, uh, it's got a little trailer that can carry up to fifty pounds, if you did have a, if, if you did have like a hostage situation where you needed bandages, you need to get something, that's how we used them when we was in Dothan, uh, that kinda thing. Or, you know, throw phone, they was able to carry a throw phone in there, uh, on that, because you can, you can remotely drop that trailer and drop the phone right there with them, and it's drive it right back out, uh, so.
So more or less what we're up here asking y'all today, you know, perfectly, the fourteenth price of one thing we're playing with.
We just read it.
Sheriff, before we tell the price, too, this is also something that's not available in the county right now, this is something that if we had the ability, the availability to utilize it, we would also be able to utilize it for the municipalities, they call us, can't give it to them only because of the training, they would just, one of us could with them, but, um, it's something that'd be available to all citizens.
Yeah, I'd expect y'all to be there, I mean, I knew you would be.
And you are, you're with, that's what we're here for, anybody ask for help, we're here for help. But, the, the, and, and, I'm not trying to be greedy, or I wanna, we want two of them, we want both models, and you see, just why, if we got the one thing going on, I don't have to take that top off and do this and go ahead and buy both of them, but this is the deal, because first we looked at doing the, the lease the own program, all that, where we, uh, at the top of the room, and Raymond and them, we'd like to buy, we'd like to let, the sheriff, with sheriff's office, buy the most expensive one out of drug seize bonds, and we're asking y'all to buy the cheap one out of, uh, I mean, of budget money. And that, that's more or less what we're be asking about.
The, the one thing I wanna ask you, are you, are you guys the only game in town, I mean, is this sole source? I mean, I know, I'm sure the sheriff has checked all this out, I don't know.
Yes, they provide it later.
It has to approve, yeah, it has to meet somebody's approval.
Right, that's what, that's the reason.
Sir, in this class, we are the only robot that makes this size robot for, for law enforcement and military. Uh, there, there is no other robot in this class. Now, I, Robot, who is our biggest competitor, uh, who is getting out of this field, I mean, and that's why I kinda threw out there about the, the vacuum cleaners, I mean, that's what's keeping them afloat is the Roomba, but.
I wanted to do one more thing that we can, that, well, we can go ahead on Bridget, but we can buy the surveillance equipment and not have to, to, to bid it out also.
How long have y'all been in business?
The, the company's been in business almost six years now. Been producing this, this robot for almost six years, company's been around about eight.
If you start, we're not trying to keep anything from everybody, what's the cost of this robot?
Uh, it's about fifty-two, it's, it's a little bit more, fifty, huh, with, with it, with the cannon and everything on it, it's gonna be, it's gonna run close to sixty.
So sixty thousand dollars?
And that's twenty-five thousand right there, twenty-four, twenty-four nine ninety-five or something like that.
You know, and we're saving a, a billion dollar body, a billion dollars there.
Well, I think you can't put a price on, on a deputy.
Right.
Right.
And also, and also, I thought about too, when it ran around into jail the other day, God only knows, we, I don't think we ever had it here in Rankin County, but if we have a situation like Heinz County did, where they over there, they take over a whole pod over.
Right.
You know, we can actually go in with a canister here, because we took six hours, because we had to get people over, we sent our team, several other teams, and, I mean, it was a bad situation over there, it could have been really bad, because they had shanks, they had everything else, they had, had a couple of guns, I think, didn't they?
But can it not be, not be, um, harmless?
Well, we were asking about it, but again, is, did we mount a taser on it?
Well, I was, that's what I was asking, Ken, I mean, it's like.
Right now, we do not do any of that mainly because of liability purposes, you know, I mean, there's some smart people around, and I'm sure that that initiator, y'all can figure out how to put a taser on there and make it fire, we, we do not do that mainly because the human factor in it, you know, if they, if, you can imagine, if the word got out that we built a robot that shot guns or tasers or things like that, it would, it wouldn't be good. So, so, yes, I'm sure you can, but we do not sell one.
I was, okay.
I know it's, I know it's a lot of money, but like I said, I think it's way worth it, I wouldn't come up here, y'all know, I wouldn't come up here asking, oh, I wouldn't be wasting taxpayer's money, is this something that I think we need? And I don't like, like I'm saying, we can use this every place, I'll tell you, I think it's gonna be worn out, we're gonna use it every week.
You can't, you can't put a price on a deputy's life or hostage situation, I mean, there's, there's no way to really compare, it's just an shame that it's gone to that as far as the change of, of times that we have these situations that y'all have faced, and so many that y'all have faced that, uh, most us, as well, a lot, most, all the general public mostly, don't realize some things y'all are facing and have to go up against.
And that's it, because Chuck, y'all, you never put a suicide in my property, I mean, my, my estate, it doesn't make the eye prize of that.
Right. If it does need repair?
Good question.
Repair here, or do we get a replacement?
It depends, uh, so, so if it's something easy, it's really pretty easy to work on. Um, for an example, I had a toggle switch break the other day, they sent me a toggle switch and I repaired it myself, it's really simple to do. If there's something that needs to be changed, um, and, or if something's broke, hard broke on it, flipper breaks or something falls down the stairs, and shearpin breaks in it or something. Um, what we will do is we will ship you another one, send yours home, or to headquarters to get fixed and repaired and upgraded, and then ship it back, so you'll never be without.
Okay.
So we, we will always do that, and, and I'm a, I'm a little, I'm a little biased, and, and it's like I started off with the sheriff and him the other day, guys, I don't make a commission on this, I, I believe in the product. So, um, if you buy it, fantastic, because I know it saves lives, uh, but I don't, I'm not here to push it because I'm getting money off of it, um, but I know that it works, and our customer service is bar none, I mean, you could call them right this second and get a person on the phone, and they're gonna talk you through how, hey, I'm having this issue, or mash this button and do this, or they're gonna say, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna get you a tech, I'm gonna send it back to get it fixed.
And you're out of where?
The company is out of Sunnyvale, California. I'm out of Smith Station, Alabama, roll tide.
Do you know Mr. Slade?
No, but I, I know I could have either got eggs right then, or I found a roll tide in here somewhere.
Alright, well.
Mr. President, if I may, just for the sake of clarification there, I'm, I'm reading the letter here that Bridget has already gone over as well, and I'm finding six separate descriptions of, of, um, capabilities or component parts of these units that are unique to this particular company, that is, that they don't, they're not available on any other sort of platform from any other sort of company, and what that results in is that if you want the machines to do this, you have to go with this model.
So it would be a sole source, basically, yes.
And so you got several different features that are patented by this company, they're only available through this company. So, the sheriff is desirous of using this equipment, and he's comfortable with it, he feels good that it will be helpful to them, that this is the only direction that he or this board can get.
Have you, I'm assuming you've researched over the years or whatever, maybe other devices?
I personally, I mean, just haven't played with a few here or one, and the other one, I only get, I do wanna throw bot, I want a little throw bot thing that we can throw in, because you can still use it in different, you know, like on the second story window, you could throw it in or in certain situations, but I've never seen one that had the capabilities of this one. Especially the door breaching tool and the ability to open a door.
And climb the stairs.
Yeah, and climb the stairs.
We have looked at several, um, and, and we're kind of relying heavily on the FBI's decision, because they've done more research than we have.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Hundred thousand, millions of dollars research that they've done.
Right.
It, the officer said it back here perfectly, it's, it's a tool, and, I mean, you go to, you go to Sears and you buy a pack of screwdrivers, you don't get one, you get six because you got, and if, I, perfect world, if I had two robots, it would be this robot and the throw bot because they work so good together. Um, you know, you can get that thing on a roof, you can get it in a window, you can get it soaked light as two and a half pounds, and this one can climb the stairs and do the other things that the other ones can't. So you have one of them on the officer to check out one room while this one's tied up or something, them two work hand in hand perfectly, it's tools in your toolbox.
How much is a throw bot?
Seven thousand?
I, I don't know, I, I don't know, I, I was thinking a little bit more than that, but I don't, I don't know.
I know when I first looked at it, it was like around seven thousand.
But what you're looking at right now is these two, right?
A throw bot is more or less.
A dumbbell.
Yeah, it's, it's a tube about that big round, with a wheel on both sides.
Gotcha.
And a camera.
Okay.
Can't speak, I don't think it, I think the new version of it may work in low light, this one works low light, it has the whole light built in, and that throw bot can't climb the stairs, uh, doesn't have two-way communication.
Our big thing is stairs, everything's an airplane, has stairs, I don't care, you know, if you're at a mobile home, even the stairs going up to get in there, you know, there's always some kind of stairs.
Sure, obstacle, yeah.
It is, it is night vision capable as well, so if it goes, if the lights was off in this room, you just come in from the daylight into the dark place, it automatically picks up the, an infrared light uh, you can turn on, on the front, the camera, this camera here is always gotta hit for that light on it, that this one is, you can turn it on or off, or you gotta over white light, in case you need to get it. Get on the over white light, there's that one on that one, and there's the, the white light on that one. So on the front there, you got the, the camera, you got the I R light, you got the two speakers, and you've got the microphone.
And to me, it's intimidating, if a guy's sitting there, and he sees his whole thing coming down the road, I'll be, ooh, I'm getting worried.
I mean, all it needs, all it needs is a weapon on it.
Yeah, well, they have no idea that it doesn't have a weapon on it.
That's exactly right, I'll tell you what's, you can do this, everybody puts a laser pointer, put a red laser pointer on the side of it, and you just point it at him, he automatically thinks he's got a gun pointed on him. I mean, overseas, we used it to get people back in the house, I just take my laser pointer out, pop it out, and they're, whoo, they get right back, because they see Rambo and all these other movies. So all you gotta do is point the laser pointer at them, and they're done, you're like, alright, I get up.
Especially one that's kind of incapacitated or been drinking or whatever, too, they're, they're in a different world already, so.
What's the battery life on it?
Four hours continuous use, so if we're just getting behind it and start walking and walking and walking, and of course, the weather's gonna have a little bit to do with it, but, but four hours continuous use, the package is twenty-five thousand dollars, is, it comes with two batteries, uh, and it comes with the chargers and things, and then this has also got a built-in battery. The battery is, is a Redder twenty-five ninety rechargeable battery, uh, and it takes about. The battery is, is a rather twenty-five ninety rechargeable battery, uh, and it takes about as long to recharge the battery as it does for it to run down. So, if it takes three hours to run down, then it's gonna take about three hours for it to charge back up. If you're in a situation that takes longer than that, it will charge off of a car charger, uh, an actual twelve volt car charger, and then also, if you're in a situation where you're away from it for a while, and you've got your extra battery, your remote, uh, your, um, OCU control unit can, you can plug it into this battery as well and use it, and it's like your cell phone, so it continues to charge even if you're using it. So, you can plug it into the car, or the Bearcat, or your armored car, or whatever it is, so it can charge as you go.
Lifetime of the batteries? That just, I know you can't pinpoint it.
No, I, I can't, because I've had, I mean, I've had some that just went bad right away, and then I've had others, again, it's warranty, so I mean, if they go bad, uh, we, we replace them. I, I don't know of anybody who's asked for more batteries that we've sold the robots to, though, uh, that had, that has bought it recently, you know, I mean, in the last two, two, three years.
And, and, and this is a lithium battery, it says, it's not gonna build like upstream like last, last, like they build it for me, but, but, these are the lithium batteries, so that shouldn't...
Yeah, there's no memory.
So, most episodes are completed before the battery will run down?
Well, it's four hours continuous use too, so...
Continuous, meaning you gotta be rolling all the time.
It's sitting, it's hardly drawing any power right now, so it, I have done, you know, vendor shows and things like that, where I've had it at that booth and played with it on and off, all day long, eight, ten hours, and never had to change the battery. I thought that was that thing, I'm like, oh, we've never heard you do that before.
All right, well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, very informative.
There you go.
Thanks, guys.
Hope my grandkids don't see that.
Yeah, exactly.
Why don't you let Raymond carry that for you?
Yeah, this one will be on, it's about...
Well, with the, with the initiator and the carbon fiber pen, it's, it's a little less than sixty.
Yeah, so, when they say the robot on these, it's a two-man's robot.
Yeah, it, it, uh, this one weighs, oh, weight-wise, you're saying?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 so it's, it's about, um, about forty-eight pounds, the other one's twenty, uh, twenty-five, which is battery and everything, and it's about thirty-six.
Forty-eight?
This one's self-right as well, uh, you just gotta use the arm, so before how you use the flipper, that arm kind of sets it off, you just kind of use the arm to push it, so it gets, uh...
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that was very informative, very much. Thank y'all, appreciate John.
Who's gonna beat that?
Okay, that's a tough act to follow, but, uh, I think next we have here is Charles Parker.
He's the Atari bird.
I'm the Atari. Yeah, it is a tough act to follow.
That's Pac-Man.
It makes my business kind of duh. But anyway, thank you, I have two items on the agenda, one is our Old Fan and Road reconstruction project. I'm recommending approval of pay request number twenty-five to Southern Rock LLC, in the amount of five hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents. Requesting authority to issue that check.
Motion?
Motion for second.
Motion, Mr., um, Johnson, second, Mr. Wilcox, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Adam B.
Adam B is requesting approval of an AT&T utility permit to bear fiber optic cable along across Glenn's View Drive and install between Vine Drive and Isaiah Court, I'm recommending approval of that permit, it's small.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by myself, second, Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Dale Westbrook, road manager.
Make a motion that we approve road work conference in January two thousand fifteen, road work scheduled for February two thousand fifteen.
Second.
First, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Johnson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. My name's Craig Slick.
Thank you, gentlemen. This time, uh, we'll take up item A under me, to set a public hearing for March the sixteenth of two thousand fifteen at nine AM for the Richard Smith rezoning request with conditional use request at four forty-nine Williams Road.
Motion, set that public hearing.
Second.
Motion, set the public hearing by Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Keith, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Uh, item B is set, to set the public hearing for, uh, April the sixth, two thousand fifteen, nine AM, for the Old Fan and Road self-storage conditional use request, eleven eighty-eight Old Fan, and that's District Five.
I'm making motion, set the public hearing.
I'll second that. Motion, set the public hearing, to, set that public hearing with Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Keith, any discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. President, next item is, uh, item C, the consideration of and possible action to approve the AIA contract between Rankin County and JHNH Car Architects related to the Rankin County Chancery Court and Justice Court projects. Uh, I, it is in your packet, item C, under Roman numeral ten, standard AIA document, this is moving us from the pre-planning stage and basic programming format that they've been operating under, and moving us into an actual, uh, s- uh, site determination, site selection, and eventually a, a design phase once the board has made a decision. So, th- this is just simply putting us in place to have them authorized to proceed beyond where we have gotten to this point.
I'm making motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Keith, second, Mr. Johnson, any discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, D, D?
Mr. President, item D is the approval of a resolution in support of the conceptual plan uh, that was presented by Mayor Butch Lee on behalf of the City of Brandon for development of additional transportation corridors in and around downtown Brandon. Uh, you guys were provided a copy of that draft, uh, to review over the weekend, uh, as you know, this was discussed, uh, on Thursday, or Friday, I'm losing track of time. And so, it was, uh, it was put together after that discussion at the work session, it was discussed thoroughly by the board with the mayor, uh, and, in, in short form, the resolution acknowledges that there is, uh, a growth within the county and the city of Brandon. There is additional traffic, anybody that drives on the roads within the city of Brandon knows that there is significant in, uh, increase in traffic as a result of our growth in our county and other factors. Uh, there, uh, is insufficient corridors in and around the downtown area to deal with that increased tran- uh, congestion, and Brandon is putting forward conceptual plans that are designed to alleviate that congestion. At some point, those designs are going to be in a format for this board to consider, uh, or a later board to consider, uh, and, and it most likely, on the basis of what we've heard to this point, will include some impact on properties that are both sixteenth section properties, meaning that the school district controls the title and ownership of those properties, and/or, uh, Rankin County property, and so, because of that impact, the city approached and said, this is what we're planning, we want to let you guys know about it on the front end, we would appreciate your indication of your support for at least the development of the plan, and then decisions that need to be made later will be made later.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve, of the approval of the resolution in support of conceptual plan in the city of Brandon for development of additional transportation corridors in and around downtown Brandon.
A second. Motion, made by Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Keith, any, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Ms. Laura Oster.
Good morning, the first thing I have to say is authority to purchase a one eight thousand and fifteen Pierce commercial pump in the southwest fire district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Wilcox, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The next item is authority for Rankin County to enter into an MOU in Mississippi ITS, and this is to purchase the city take data management, uh, system, and their charge will not exceed five hundred and sixty dollars, um, for data procurement. This is basically what the sheriff said on the, said on federal, it's on the state level, they've done all the research and everything on this, and we can attach onto their contract in order to purchase this item.
Okay, motion approved, second. Motion approved, uh, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Keith, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
The next item is request, uh, approval of the increase in mileage reimbursement rate to, uh, point five seven five cents per mile for traveling private vehicles according to the state Mississippi Department of Finance and Administration, and effective as of February the second, two thousand fifteen.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Johnson, second, Mr. Wilcox, any more discussion?
Yeah, what was, uh, what's, what's it gone from, I can't remember what?
Point five six, five, point five six, five to point five seven five. They did, they made a specific, they didn't make point five six.
No, big increase.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Really. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item D?
Okay, the last thing I need is authority to issue checks, uh, two of them, one in the amount of two million dollars from the general fund account and a ten thousand from payroll fund to open the accounts of Bank Plus as they approved county deposit, this is just starting the process, just...
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Johnson, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you, any additional business?
Um, Mr. President, I'd like to just discuss just one, one little bit about, I need to, we need, I guess we need some clarification a little bit, and I don't want to open up any can of worms, but, uh, uh, was hoping Brett Ishi, is Brett here today?
He's in class.
He's in the class? Okay. Okay, can you discuss just a little bit about what we, and this is, this kind of pertains to the ambulance service from, oh, Brandon, and just a little bit of synopsis, that way we can kind of get everything kind of on the same page.
Obviously, I'm gonna have to stand in and provide just, you know, the details that I'm aware of.
Is that this?
Yes, sir, uh, if you'll just hang on to that, and we may need to refer to that, but, I, I, I think it's fairly clear, uh, the, the subject matter that needs to be discussed is just a clarification to be sure we're all on the same page.
Right.
Uh, as we know, the county has provided ambulance service to all of its citizens through AMR, uh, for many years. We have a contract with AMR, and that contract provides for, uh, ambulance service at a cost to all county residents that's miniscule, about twenty thousand dollars or so. Total, uh, is, uh, is, uh, taxpayer expense associated with ambulance service. Ambulance service is a compensator to pay for through either the individuals who use the service, or their carriers, their health carriers. And so, uh, that's just been the arrangement that we've had for years. Uh, there has been, o- over time, historically, there's been an effort to try to improve that service. There are areas of the county, it's no secret, that are difficult to get to. They're way out there, uh, and sometimes those response times have not been, uh, they've not been acceptable. And so, through a, uh, over the course of time, there've been efforts to tweak that and make it better. The city of Brandon has made the independent decision, uh, to move in a different direction for ambulance service, and they have now engaged a company out of Arkansas called Pafford Ambulance Service, uh, to come in and to provide ambulance response for residents of the city of Brandon who reside within the municipal boundaries of the city of Brandon. Uh, in, in that effort to try to fold that new service in to the middle of the county and deal with how that impacts the county service through AMR, we've had to have coordination. That's typically been done through our fire coordinator and EMS coordinator, which is Brett Ishi, and Brett's done a good job of trying to circle wagons and get everybody on the same page as best we can. There's been a good bit of interaction with our volunteer firefighters and other responders, not just ambulance responds to emergency, so there are other responders who go, and that necessitates some coordination when it comes time to respond to an emergency. In other words, when dispatch gets the call, there has to be a coordination of all of the callouts that go with that. So, there, we're now going to have to go through the process of determining, is this a Brandon call, is this a county call, is there some coordination involved in that? It's just gonna take some time to get that all sorted out, and we expect there to be some wrinkles here and there, uh, but we're looking forward to working with Brandon and making sure we get that smoothed out as best we can. One of the issues that came up in the middle of the discussions about coordination is, was from the sheriff, and I know the sheriff's here, uh, the sheriff was clear that he would like, for the purposes of response to the jail, he would like for AMR to continue that response.
Right, and there's nothing, I don't have any problem with Pafford at all, so we have a contract with AMR, it's not gonna cost me anything for AMR to come pick up the patients, if Pafford's coming, it's gonna cost me something. So, I'm just trying to save tax, that tax dollars in my, in my budget, so, you know, I still like for AMR to come to, to come to the jail, pick up the inmates.
Correct, so as a part of, and, and obviously, the sheriff had made that clear, I, my understanding is, and Mayor, you're here, I appreciate your being here this morning, my understanding is that as it relates to Brandon's service, they do not have an issue with that, they intend to, to follow that protocol. Now, they may have a problem, they haven't expressed it directly to me, but, uh, at any rate, that's, that was the request the sheriff made, we have a contract with AMR to provide that service, so...
Mayor...
Yeah, yeah, I'm starting with the jail, 'cause I know the jail is just one issue where I felt like we had a good understanding, at least that was my understanding, that Pafford, Pafford understood that the sheriff wanted AMR to continue to respond to the jail, they, they may not understand that.
Yeah, please.
Please do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have to sit, you have to sit back there quietly.
Yeah. Sitting back there going through a lot of data, congratulations, Mr. President. Uh, the difference, the only difference is, Pafford is in support of AMR because AMR, it does have a contract with the county, even though, is it still in force?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, the issue becomes if it's a, for instance, you had an inmate in December that was, went down because of a seizure, and our fire department showed up, our EMTs and paramedics did an assessment, they called for an ambulance, and about an hour later, the ambulance got here, I think it's fifty-something minutes later. You know, so that places our first responders on scene and in control until AMR gets here. And that's part of the reason why we went with a, we chose to do an RFP process, a lengthy process, very public, didn't hold back on that, to go with that before, so when we respond, what I'm getting to, we're coming with, if we're called to the jail, we're gonna come, and we're gonna bring Pafford with us for an emergency response action. So, you know, that's just, that's how we're gonna get timely response. So, we, the issue in that particular case, and I've got a book full of incidents like that here across this county, where our guys are told repeatedly there's not an ambulance available, so our citizens have been, you know, we had a basketball game down here two weeks ago on Saturday night between Pearl and Brandon, they canceled the game, waiting on an ambulance to get there to pick up a kid with a broken leg. Can't have that anymore, you know, so we've just gotta do better, and that's the reason why we took that action. Uh, that broken leg that night helped precipitate that, so, that's the path we're on, we, we think we've got better service, we had a, actually, Saturday night, we had a heart attack down at high school, responded to that, ambulance was there in four minutes, and the patient was on the way to the hospital in less than fifteen. So, I, I've got a whole data lengthy thing here we can go into if you'd like to know the additional reasons for that, but just wanted to clarify that we understand AMR has a contract with the county, and don't mind transports, Pafford doesn't mind transports, AMR comes to get people from the jail to carry them wherever they need to go, but if you call the city of Brandon for EMTs and paramedics in an emergency, we're coming with everything we've got, so...
Uh, how you gonna, how, how would we do, how was that?
I, I guess we're just gonna get the jail staff over there and, uh, get, in, in that jail, we're gonna treat everything as an emergency situation, but I guess once we look at that, and, and, uh, we've actually transported, you know, if it's not too bad, we're gonna transport them ourselves, but, uh, I guess they sit down with Eddie Key and, and, uh, and come with some kind of plan. Cause they're, they're, I mean, I can't, maybe one out of ten is like a full-blown merciful, we gotta get them out of there now, you know, and I guess we're just gonna come up with some plan to, to let them, let them know.
It's a complex problem, and it took us a long, it took two years to reach this point in time. point in time. Uh, I think you got a letter from my last fire chief, every member on the board, you didn't see it, but, uh, talking about this in two thousand thirteen and coming forward. Uh, we've had nursing home residents left at the hospital and not picked up, carried back to the nursing home, therefore creates a problem for the hospital to keep patients overnight when they should have just been in and out for routine tests. We've had patients at the hospital that had to be put into taxis to carry back to the nursing home from the hospital after test because no ambulance was available, and we just gotta do better in that.
I'm just curious, um, for some reason, you had, uh, how, how many ambulances? I think it's three you have here for, was this new service?
Pafford, the new service, they brought six, actually. They brought four, trying to staff four. That was another thing that AMR told us, that there weren't enough people around. They had a shortage of paramedics. I heard that a lot because they, they did a proposal to us too. Uh, and it was very interesting that when we, when Pafford began, we kind of kept our thumb on it. When Pafford began interviewing people, they had a hundred and twelve applications for jobs with thirty-five paramedics that wanted to go to work with them. So that kind of spoke loudly that there's a lot of people here in Rankin County that want to work here in Rankin County, but they didn't want to work with AMR, and some of those were AMR employees.
What would happen in, for Brandon, if you have a, something in, where there's, one, all these, their ambulances are tied up?
That's a good question.
Will AMR, have they agreed to come in, back up for you, or, or what, what will happen?
Well, you know, if you've got six, you know, I, as I told our board, I'd be happy just to have one in Brandon. And I mean, many, many times, we didn't have one. Many, many times, there's one coming to Brandon out of Mendenhall, because there's not a lot of that.
Yeah, I understand the deal. I was just curious, what's happening, few, few?
Well, in Katrina, for instance, there were none to be had in Rankin County. They were all busy elsewhere. Uh, you know, so you arrive at those things, just like a fire department or a law enforcement. You just had, uh, equipment in here, and I believe Raymond said, uh, you know, we would see these things being used at a municipality, except we'll be there operating them. And that's true, because there's just some things that are beyond the scope of a fire department or a police department to handle, and that's when you have mutual aid agreements. Same thing proves true for.
Well, I just want, do you have, is that in effect now to help city of Brandon in that situation?
Yeah, you indicated they were in Hope, Arkansas. They've been operating in Mississippi for almost forty years. So if you've got any counterparts in the Delta, Mayor Tunick could call me, uh, you know, just pray, heap a lot of praise on them. So we know they're a good provider, and Pafford actually backs up AMR over in Ruston, Louisiana, so.
Okay. I mean, will AMR back them up?
Well, that's a, I can't.
I'm, I'm just saying, what, I'm just curious what kind of plan is set, or how that, how's that gonna work?
I don't know that we're there yet, and the reason why is the certif- certificate that Pafford EMS got from the state of Mississippi for an E, a defined EMS district for the city of Brandon inside corporate limits, they just achieved that Saturday night. Our contract was based upon them achieving that.
Okay.
So they weren't gonna be operating, they didn't get that till about eight o'clock Saturday night. So, you know, a lot's transpired Friday, Saturday, Sunday, to this moment, and a lot of this is.
Still gotta be worked out, yeah, I understand.
You know, it's, it's a very fresh issue, that's right, the choice of work.
Okay.
So how?
Does that help clarify? For, I mean?
So how quick can we now move since we've seen some of this wrinkles and stuff like that? I'm, I guess I'm asking my attorney and the mayor and sheriff and all of this. I know that there are certain situations that are some wrinkles. Can we work through this, some of this, this week, so we don't have any, you know, and I know there's no way to get every single wrinkle ironed out, but, you know, I know that the school district is out there also. I think that's a looming question.
I wanna, I wanna go back and retrace something that the mayor said, because I don't want it to get lost in translation.
Right.
Until eight o'clock Saturday night, there was not a contract between the city of Brandon and Pafford.
Right.
To provide ambulance service. Because the contract was contingent upon them getting a certificate from the state board that defined the boundary of their response area.
Okay.
That's hap- that happened eight o'clock Saturday night. The movement earlier to try to determine, what do we do about school district, was preceded that, that time.
Right.
Okay. What, what we were trying to figure out was, since the sheriff had made his statement that he would like for AMR to continue to respond, and that's, that's a county function, we wanted to know, is there a similar opinion on behalf of the school district for those schools in the school district that are within the city of Brandon? Should AMR continue to respond there? We just needed some direction from the school district. That's a separate legal entity. They needed to let us know what they wanted to do. We found out late Friday evening that their position was, we would like to stay with the county. We're a county function, we're gonna go with the county. Okay? Saturday night, with the new defined EMS boundary, the state law is pretty clear. If it's a, if it's a facility, if it's a residence, if it's a, a, a resident who is within the municipal boundary of the city of Brandon, it's within the Pafford EMS district, and they have the right under state law to exclusively serve that. Unless Pafford and AMR figure out an arrangement or an agreement, Pafford will have the ability to say, AMR's not gonna respond to this, we are. And it would not matter that the school district says, we want AMR. It would not, technically, it would not matter if the sheriff says, I don't want Pafford because the jail is inside Brandon. Not the same for the potential, so that's in the county.
So I think, I think we have a simple solution from my end of it. We just will call, if it's a, I have registered nurses over there, we have ner-, so the, the level of care is there, it's not like they're laying at the basketball game with no, you know,
Right, right.
With a EMT or something like that, I have a nurse over there. So we're just gonna talk with our nurses over there, and if it's like a, like a full-blown heart attack, something, yeah, we want Pafford to come on and get that inmate, we'll just pay the bill for now, we'll just call AMR direct, hey, we have one guy in the fight back here, his head's cut open, need transported to the hospital, and we just gonna call the fight, you know, we just gonna call, set in motion where they have to, where Pafford and Brandon have to come on.
Right.
And just stand by until AMR gets there.
And I think all of us want to be in a situation, honestly, we want to be in a situation where the response to an emergency situation is as fast as it can be.
Right.
Right?
Right.
So we don't want to set up hurdles and get in the way of our attempts to make sure that our folks get emergency, get emergency response.
Correct.
I don't want to put words in Butch's mouth, but I, I think you can agree that what we're trying to do is to get the very best ambulance service we can get for our folks. And our folks means Brandon, and it means the county and other municipalities. So that's what we want to have accomplished. Uh, the letter that, that you guys have in front of you is simply a, basically, it is saying what I just told you, that now that the state board has issued the MS certificate to Pafford, they are calling the shots as it relates to their MS district, okay? So we need to, we need to recognize that. Our contract with AMR allows certain benefits that we, that are not afforded through Pafford's service. We don't have a contract with Pafford. And so there are some issues that need to be sorted out.
Right, right.
I would like for us to have an opportunity, and I encourage Mark, by the way, uh, to, to help us get a meeting set up.
Right.
So that we can talk to our EOC folks, the city of Brandon, Pafford, and AMR folks. And let's get, let's get everybody around the table so we can figure out what are some of these potential hurdles that we need to overcome, and how can we work those out and resolve them. I'm absolutely convinced we can get them resolved.
Oh, yeah.
But it's neither time.
Well, that's the reason why I brought this up, because I just, you know, I know it's brand spanking new, but we just don't need, right now, any finger pointing and all, and by all means, we sure don't need anyone saying, hey, wait, who, it's, it's theirs, no, it's not ours, it's theirs, it's theirs. So the quicker we can get this over, you know, as far, as far as getting everyone together on the same page, that's what I'm all about. And I think this whole board would probably agree with me.
If I can, uh, interject one thing, um, I, I want to, uh, accept responsibility from my part in there not being good communication back to the city of Brandon about the inquiry to the school district. I dropped the ball on that. I should have called the mayor, I should have called Mark, uh, on Friday late, uh, but I was wanting to be, to be sure, I'm not trying to excuse my failure to do that, but I wanted to be sure that I knew what the position of the school district actually is, because all we have is a verbal.
Right.
And as we, as I stand here right now, we still don't have anything in writing from the school district. So Mayor, my apology for not getting in touch with you, but I really didn't know what to tell you for sure, and I still don't. It's just been verbal to this point.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, again, the speed of, of the movement, uh, the, the lateness of the hour on the certificate has generated some of this. It left a lot of un- unanswered questions, and hopefully in this next week or so, we can get everybody around the table and sort it out.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay, any other additional business to be discussed?
I would like to thank Mr. Wilcox for his leadership over the last three months I've been here.
Thank you, Mr. Keith. Appreciate that.
I did owe that to you. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Jerry, appreciate it.
Um, if there's not any other additional, this will recess until February twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, nine o'clock.
Make a motion that we recess till February seventeenth, nine o'clock.
Second. All right. Motion, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Keith. Keith, thank y'all. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I think it's all, all opposed, yeah. I think clearly all in.
You're right.
You got it.
Well, I've seen these things.